The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack Dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, Nevada. Ely City Council Meeting, August 31st, 2021.
(inaudible)
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 Public meeting order, if not in the place? I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I will be in touch with you for any take from there. Let's pray. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for our town of Ely and for your blessings upon it. We ask for your continued help with the pandemic, that we can be healthy. We thank you for the work that you give us, responsibilities that we're able to take on. We ask, Lord, for your blessings upon the mayor, upon various levels of city staff, and for the city council members that are here today. Help them, Lord, to work in harmony together amidst different ideas. Help them to work together to find a common ground. Pray, Lord, for personal peace for them, for joy in their work. Pray for confidence in what they do. Lord, we pray all these things in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you. We'll have the call.
Mayor Robertson.
Present.
Councilman Flankas.
Here.
Councilman Carson.
Here.
Councilman Spear.
Here.
Councilman Alber.
Present.
Councilwoman Williams Harper.
Here.
City Creek League.
Here.
City Treasurer and HR Director Trask is on by Zoom. City Attorney Kahoon.
Here.
Public Court Supervisor Craycraft.
Here.
City Building Official Walker.
Here.
City Engineer Alber.
Here.
City Police Chief Hemmerich.
Here.
Municipal Judge Hoster.
Here.
And that's all.
Okay, thank you very much. With that, we move on to public comment.
My name is Lloyd Miller, and I am here to discuss J. D. Island 5C having to deal with the stop at Hill Science on Avenue Bell and 12th Street. I was grateful to see that a traffic study was done by Joe Henry. My mother has owned a home there for 45 years, and so my daughter has a home a couple doors up on Avenue Bell for her. And so I'm frequently in that neighborhood. And over the past few years, I have noticed an increase in traffic. One due to in the fall, one due to the high school playing ball on the fields, the others due to a wonderful school that we have built out there, the Leonard Rush Charter School. On Avenue 12, on 12th Street, it's a hill about 1,200 feet, and I believe, I want to say Avenue I, I might get it wrong, all the way to Avenue M with no, you know, no traffic devices to stop or slow down the cars. And so what I've seen frequently in that neighborhood is parents trying to get their kids to school and pick them up from school. A lot of their misses, whether it's a vehicle, or whether it's pedestrians, or kids on bicycles, leaving David E. Norman and traveling east to home. I'm glad to see something is being done with this. When they done the traffic study, keep in mind that it was then in the month of August, when there were no activities taking place on the baseball fields, when we were out of school. As of yesterday, I'm sure that you're going to see, should have seen an increase in traffic on that, on that street. And the reason 12th Street is seeing a lot more activity and traveling that, because I do go pick up my granddaughter from school, is because they are avoiding the school zone around David E. Norman. So they're going to move one step away and closer because they're avoiding one more stop sign and a 15 mile an hour speed zone. So I'm here to approve, you know, I'm here to give my support for any type of traffic control on those streets and keeping our students and our young folks in mind as we do so, because the parents that are, that are increasing are taking children and bringing children back, and I feel it's very important to use someone that block. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Mr. Mayor, on your agenda item AC4, you're to consider remoneying for building $124,987 of the media restoration plans in Nevada Northern Railway for track restoration due to the Endon Sewer Project. That needs to be denied. The railroad who did this project was coming in to shoot a plan for just the room tax monies alone given to the, given to them for the months of May, June, and July this year. They received $103,562.23. With the room tax monies received for the month of August, which should be even higher, they would have had enough for the project. Former Councilman Beecher and present Councilman Alber, the bits that addressed the reward that tens of thousands of dollars have been wrestled from the railroad. Again, yes or no? Was an insurance claim filed? Yes or no? We still don't know. I want to remind you that Mr. Bassett manages the railroad and his wife is the bookkeeper. Declare blatant and intentional violation of nepotism. If you can't account for the taxpayers' money, you all need to resign. You're forgetting your fiduciary responsibility in the taxpayers. The railroad needs to come back under the oversight of the city council and operate under the Nevada Open Meeting Law since they have spent hundreds of thousands of dollars of taxpayers' money. You should recall former city attorney Manoey's opinion regarding the city tree board and the animal control board spending taxpayers' money has to be in an open meeting on an agenda. The guidelines for the open meeting law need to be observed, and the Nevada Northern Railway is no different. Mr. Mayor, I'm disappointed in you for not being on the decision made by the council to write off over $4,000 for utilities that were used by 790 Avenue I. The city council is against electrically enforcing the law. You appear to give rich people and corporation grants that are not afforded to the ordinary taxpayer citizen. You have yet to direct a bill to me and my family regarding our different accounts. I've been asking you for years. We can't use our property as others do to the single citizen's own. The city needs to be, to bring back utility billing to city hall, and you need to hire a treasurer with a badge to bring an accounting as required by the city code. All your problems will go away, Mayor, but you're ignoring that fact. Mr. Mayor, today I'm not receiving the copy of the final adopted personnel code that was, or policy that was approved by the city council that's allowed by the Nevada Open Meeting Law. I want to draft the one that finally should be addressed. Mr. Mayor, I get to receive a reply from Councilman Spear on how much was collected from those that had video games and never paid. I have never seen anything on the agenda for actually to dismiss any of those fees and penalties and interest to be waived. I requested this for information one and once. I'm asking that you provide me an answer and be right.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Here in saying now, we'll move on to item three, mayor discussion for possible action approval of agenda including removal of the agenda items. I want to hear a motion or, I want to hear a motion on that. Motion to approve. Motion to approve the agenda. I have a second. Second from Councilman Flankas. Any further discussion? Call on favor.
I'm trying.
Radio opposed. Motion passed as unanimous. I enforce the department reports. We'll start with the fire chief, who is on his way back from a call on favor, as I understand it, but. Away from an act with my word. Police chief.
I have nothing, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. We'll move on to the U.S. Court Judge, who is with us now.
All right. Thank you. The reason I come up is what was included in the supplemental materials, this, for this meeting, was not the usual one to be submitted to the state, but rather the state's report to us on judicial year that ended July 31st, 2021. So the four-page submission that says, among other things, we closed 103% of the cases that we took in, which means that during the slower moving COVID year, we were able to catch up on all cases. And so we cut the backlog, I guess would be the, this way. And, I don't know if this stat kind of stood out to me. It's generally a very positive report. The overall case reduction and revenue reduction for that last year, if you want to call it the COVID year, wasn't as severe as I thought it would be at first, the turnout. But I think, I'm sure there's a really good discussion. Right after the COVID restrictions came into play, May, April, June of last year, we had a significant change in the number of charges that were brought, how we handled them. But that slowed back up pretty quickly, the sheriff's office and the jail facility, which has both health considerations, recovered pretty quickly, and it shows in our stats for the overall reduction of cases, most of which are, as you, as Ms. Williams Harper may not know, are all misdemeanor cases, misdemeanor traffic and ordinance violation. All recovered pretty good. So it was a good year overall, and I like the state report, so I chose to include that rather than just those two, two tables that we usually send in every month after we send it to the state. Are there any questions on that?
So Mike, when you say it was a good year.
Yes.
It's good, bad year for curbs, but good year for.
Good year for judicial operations as far as metering criminality. Okay. Sure. I, you know, the, the number of cases, we do track the severity and, you know, crime rate phenomena, for lack of a better, that's definitely an overuse of the term. I, we don't really meter. You know, the biggest change that we had last year was that our court, at the essentially direction of the district attorney, private attorney, is not doing domestic violence cases because the state's Supreme Court requires that they, those defendants have access to a jury trial if they choose to. So those cases could not come to us if they were to seek the jury, though the DA put them all in the justice court. The state legislature this year changed the law to empower all municipal courts through the state of Nevada to have the authority to do jury trials. So how that's going to be implemented in White Pine County, I don't yet know, but our major training on that is a three-day deal going on in January. The usual winter, summer, it's a big focus this year, is going to be on DUIs and the conduct of jury trials in the municipal courts. I wish, I really do wish any more about it, actually training, I'm looking forward to sometimes training is rather redundant. This is all new, it's new authority for us.
Good, thank you.
All right, thank you. City, helping that. You have a major report. Okay. City clerk.
I was able to tour the new county jail with Treasurer Trask last Wednesday, or excuse me, Thursday, and just very interesting and impressive. The county certainly done a great job on that facility, and I'm proud of the city's part in contributing to that progress that we needed done.
Thank you. City Treasurer, you're on the phone, anything to report?
I don't have anything.
Thank you. City Public Works Supervisor.
I have something more to add on the report we're coming out of.
Okay. City Water Operator is reported, city engineer.
There's quite a few little things going on. One of the things I really want to comment on is, that I think is going great, is you see the city doing the chip seals on the roads, that's been a multi-year learning progress, and I do think that's going to be a big benefit to our city streets down the long road. And so what you see out there right now is a much better situation, the story seals up are going on, they will go back and clean it up, and we only did the dry drains up those roadways, and they'll go back and clean it up, and they will seal from curb to curb. And so it will be a much better situation, and I think much cheaper than the other way we were doing with all the contractors, and I think hopefully going forward, we'll get more efficient at this, and Mike and his crews did a great job of getting that stuff down, and joined effort between the city and county to do that. So that was great stuff, so I'm kind of excited about that. Mount Wheeler Power is doing some upgrades up on the terrace, they're going to want to come in and replace their power lines, and they're going to pull their poles, do some things to replace their poles, upgrade their poles. A part of that, the city has a new ordinance after a year or two ago, and so there's some coordination issues that got to go on because ATT continues to switch poles again. And so we're rolling through the coordination issue now with Mount Wheeler Power, so we need to make sure when this project proceeds that ATT will be off, the poles in the line no longer have, not double the poles, or perhaps just a few more power poles with the power having fallen on them. We met last week with the fire department and their ISO rating, that seemed to go well based on the portion of the heat that I was in with them. And one thing that we are left doing with that is the city crews, water crews have done quite a few fire hypertests around the community, and so we're taking all those water flow tests that they completed, and we're comparing it to our water network analysis software that we have coming here. So they're wanting us to, if we come back in and, based on those results from the flow test, if it matches up with our network analysis, provide the permission to them out, give us some good points for, give us a good ISO rating. The other thing that's going on is Murray Street project, they did go out there, do some more compaction testing completed, they provided us one round of compaction tests that were substantially better compaction tests than the original ones there. We thanked them for that, but we said, hey, we still have some other ones there, we're not sure what's going on, so we need to do some additional testing. And so they did go out, do some additional testing, and we're just waiting for those results to come in as well. And my understanding from them is those also were substantially better shaped as well. And then they're also provided a, a disc of, they also went and camera those sewers, and so it was just a matter of washing those cameras, make sure everything's good with it. So hopefully all that stuff ends up being anomaly, we can move on with that one. And they are starting to move in there, and so we marked up curb and gutter and everything else that's going to be pulled out for the next phase of the project, so.
We did have a question on those results that came in from Mike Peazell. Were those compaction tests done in the same locations as the previous ones?
I don't think they were done in the exactly previous ones. I wanted to do out the whole roadway, sure, to go out there, because I didn't even necessarily want them to compact where they actually sampled, because chances are when they sample, they'll put back in and compact it, so I wanted to run all the different locations throughout the road, to try not to get back to a location that made them, it tested differently.
But you're not sure if they sampled from the same location?
I just had to go back and check the station, I think they're stationed on it, probably. I just need to kind of wait to put everything, come and pop together. What I did see come in appeared to be substantially better.
They were substantially better. Some of them were above 100% compaction, which I have concerns with.
Well, that's the nature of these, sometimes that does happen, because you are, have a proctor for this material, if you get a couple extra rocks or something else in that area right there, they can definitely throw off that proctor.
Well, for me, either means they used a proctor they assumed was the same and it wasn't. I, I just don't know what kind of lab sends out results that say 105 or 108% compaction. I'm really concerned about that. I've not seen that from any plan I've, I've ever used. Yeah. That usually means something's wrong, either in the math or the material that they proctored.
It, it could be a different material over there, but I think it's still substantially probably within ranges in there that I don't know that, I surely have been involved and have been able to done that stuff before. So I realize what it is, because you do have to have multiple proctors for that compaction, because as you dig through that pit and that material changes, that proctor does change throughout that material, so.
So the proctors that weren't from the material.
They were from the material, they took the proctor from up on the street.
Okay.
I just didn't want to go back and take right exactly where they took, because they took them, they walked away, and they came back and tested again. I didn't want them to test right where they just come back and compaction them when they sampled them before. And so I purposely wanted to go somewhere else, and they weren't the risk that they sampled in the same exact location, they just compacted last week.
Well, I, I still think there's a, I'm uncomfortable with those kind of results for one reason or another, and I just got them this afternoon, and I'm sure you did too, and haven't had time to go through them.
That's, that's the first round ones, I think.
The first round?
Yeah, I think that was first round, you should send, yes. So I haven't seen the second round yet.
Okay.
Now is the round that came, and I said, hey, that's great, we're doing, making you feel uncomfortable, but I won't.
And you haven't had a chance to watch the TV?
Portion of it, no kind of.
Portion of it, yeah.
Okay. That's not the most entertaining video to watch.
Ideally.
Ideally not, yes, for sure.
Is there any other questions for the engineer?
So the camera, the camera stuff's all done then?
Yes.
That's what you're talking about, that?
Yes.
Not a blockbuster, but.
It's not, it's not a blockbuster.
I think they're moving good.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions?
Yes. On the chip seal that you're doing on the streets and whatnot, why would you bring the chip seal on some of the check holes and manhole covers and whatnot, there is a street that's been, is there any reason why we don't build those or take care of them, do the chip seal?
Well, and, and some of the streets they went near, they actually get a cold patch kind of overlay and did kind of clean up some, especially I think those are the ones that are down the center, they get a cold patch overlay. Then the other roads that I think were in a little better shape, they were hoping that they oiled and there were enough chips together, they were going to smooth out the road and make a better surface than it was. And then when it came through all the mat holes, covers, and valve covers, they basically covered it so that they wouldn't get all chippy and stuck together.
Okay. Well, I have a question on that, it's true, I think regarding with the cost of building your chip seal and everything else, why is it we don't require curb and gutter against the chip seal, so it will maintain its stop? Up on Mill Street B, or whatever you want to call the street, to get up this way, is really working out very good. But on one side, there's curb and gutter, it's tight work, on the other, it's open. And the fastest way of global deterioration is when it doesn't have any, we keep it.
100% agree. It's, I mean, the biggest part just comes down to money. We just don't have the money to put curb and gutter up on every road, even with this Murray project, we're coming in here, and we, we try to save quality curb and gutter to spread us further down the road as far as we can get. And so I'm 100% supportive of any place we can put curb and gutter, we should put curb and gutter, because it does save road, gets that water off the road, makes it much easier to.
Well, somehow or another, what they had done was done in the past, especially out in the eastern part of town, where the streets were much wider, they were, they were people 10 feet on both sides of the street for their parking, providing they put curb and gutter. And they put curb and gutter, and therefore they, when it was paved, those streets are holding.
And, and they are, those streets in East New York are extremely wide, and just so expensive to maintain, and that's why I just explained that we, we try to maintain the dry line, everybody's driving, and not so much the parking spots where people are parking. Just, one, one day, I think maybe the next round, we work through the community, we probably would go curb to curb, but we want to do the most we can for general public driving, do the drive lanes in each direction, and then we'll get to the curb and gutter as money's available in the community.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
City Willie.
Willie.
Okay. I have five reports, city council, we'll start with Councilwoman Jerry Williams Harper.
I'm sorry.
Where do we, council reports, we'll start with you.
Is it okay for me to talk about?
Anything at all?
Okay. I would like to talk about going to the League of Cities. I was very honored to be able to go to the League of Cities. It was a great learning experience to find out what other larger cities are doing and what cities our sides are doing, and it was good to hear that our own council was really on the top of a lot of things. So I learned a lot, and I was quiet because I'm still in a learning mode. One thing that, that I was very concerned about, and I spoke to you a little bit about it, was I want to make sure that we are protected when it comes to cyber issues. There was a lot of talk about that, and our information and so forth being protected. So that really hurt up my ears, and I want to learn as much about that as I can, find out what our processes and procedures are to make sure that we are safe, so we don't have to lose any services for our community because of something that may happen. So it was, thank you for allowing me to meet with all of the best of my knowledge of councilmen, so.
Thank you. Councilor.
I also went to the League of Cities conference, and it was well-attended, it was the largest group they've had in quite a few years. And their membership is increasing, which is good, you know, they're strengthening numbers. And I had done the, attended, participated in the debt management meeting today also. And that life was good.
Councilman's here?
I don't have any.
Councilman Carson?
Nothing.
Councilman Flankas?
Yes, just a short report on the undercommission was good. And I will say that they're doing a good job, and looking at more than just funding, they're trying to develop a program to benefit both the city and the county.
I also attended the League of Cities with Councilman Alber and Councilwoman Williams Harper. They did have some great presentations, I think it was a valuable, a valuable time set by everybody.
With that, we'll move on to item six. The mayor will recess the regular city council meeting for a public hearing at 5:30 p.m. on the following topics. Item one, Mayor Robinson, public hearing, discussion only, approval of second reading of ordinance 743, Bill 2021-06, and then tag required chapter five of this city code of the city of Ely, setting fourth hours designated for public use of city parks. You'll take comment on the council as well as the public on the side.
Mr. Mayor, I have made amendments to the ordinance that have been provided to the council members this evening. They're indicated in red. And it's essentially just, there were certain terms that were inconsistent throughout based on our prior ordinance and the mayor's ordinance, so that's what was in there.
Sheriff Hemmerich, have you had a chance to look at this, and is this kind of what you envisioned for the?
Oh, yeah.
I, uh,
Okay. There are no substantial changes. Any comments?
Mr. Mayor, yes.
Yeah.
Um, the city park is used with no block by valering and running through there with their dogs and whatnot. Is there any way we could provide your dog and add some of that, that were in the deposit?
Uh, I'm not sure that's something we could discuss with the public boards, but I don't think that would be part of the ordinance per se.
Yeah, this ordinance is specific to the hours of the park.
Well, and the ordinance, as I was reading through it, already provides for penalties for, uh, literally, of all rights. Of all rights, but that, that's something that they do at the county parks and have an interview. Any other comments?
Yeah, uh, five five three D. I've got a question about the middle of a written application. Are we going to have a portal application for them to fill up for special events or for these car shows and stuff? Or they just will have to send you a letter saying, they said they have a condition, it's middle of a written application?
I believe we already have a one for them.
Yeah, that was a question, and we did have a question.
Now, we did send you a letter from the SSC, I don't know for sure.
No, we get a, we get a special use permit and they clear that with the public works director, and everybody signs off on it. Any other comments? Hearing and saying none, we can move on to the second item in the public hearing, which is Councilman Spear, number two. Public hearing discussion only, public suggestions for the American Rescue Plan Act art of funding received by the city of the league in responding to COVID nineteen or the negative economic impacts of the COVID nineteen public activities. And this is suggestions on how, uh, citizens or the council would like to see the city do that, something, in accordance with that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, on the American Rescue Plan, the city needs to establish a victim's fund. Some of the community of suburban vandalism, property loss, and no restitution consideration given by governing agencies. You can't just allow, have taxpayer get damaged, they're paying for protection, and then there is none. You've got to address that. There needs to be some consideration for those property owners who have not been able to collect rent and are prohibited from evicting those that have failed to pay rent, even in a small amount, and just turn their backs on these people for months. That's not going to be good. And it isn't good. Some people out there are struggling. Property owners that suffer from selective enforcement by government agencies need to be given compensation due to discrimination. You're not treating everybody the same, and that needs to be corrected. Thank you.
I have a comment, uh, please. The, we read the, the, nice little program sent out here, the video on, on that. What we all thought the priorities should be. And as we had eight members submit their, their thoughts on this. The member two, which is a council person, member four, which is also a mayor, a captain person, and member six, which are the, the five votes here, all voted that, you know, the city employees should be top priority. And I see this budget to make them out, and I know you mentioned it. And I think when you have, and actually, the mayor comment of number two, that employees should be reimbursed and taken care of. I think we need to take our, our citizens top, our employees first of all, before we start throwing money out there. It irritated the heck out of me, uh, back in March when we took the money away from them. Not even to the extent of, uh, forfeiting my entire salary for that time. And then when we have an opportunity to help people, our employees out, and we have lost some employees, which I think we could have discussed in another time, but exit interviews, but out of the six elected officials, the employees, four out of the six, number one, took it. I think that there needs to be addressed at the meeting, and if the budget committee don't want to do it, then let's take it to the next city council to take care of, make our, our employees help gain right on that.
Well, Councilman Spear, I don't think it's a matter of the budget committee not wanting to do it. Staff is aggressively trying to figure out the best way to do this along with, just to make sure that we're in compliance with how the funding needs to go out. We don't want to make a mistake on that, because then the federal government, who will audit this funding? But we should be able to have this on the next agenda meeting.
This is on this COVID stuff, there is, and I've read through every bit of it, and you can't, even, actually even, I think they called it a bonus, it was, they have another term that you could, I could pay a more than an employee that was an essential worker during that time.
Premium pay.
Premium pay.
Well, and so this is what we're trying to do.
Then let's, let's, you know, if you guys are trying to do that, I'm, right now, we've had this for some time. How many times has it been on this agenda to do this stuff? And we've come up with this, and it's a great form, and the employee should then top of the list or whatever, so that's my.
I just bring to everyone's attention that it is on the agenda for tonight, approved by the community's recommendation to include, modify, or exclude the following, premium pay for all current city of the league employees that are essential workers. Um, we have been advised by our auditor that the, um, beginning date for this funding is March third, two thousand twenty-one. And so employees that were, um, prior to that date do not be considered.
I'd like to throw some comment too, in that, this city meeting conference has made very clear to be real patient, think before we act on, act on the stuff we're going to go on here. And, uh, like the city clerk just mentioned, the treasurer is working real diligently with our auditor on that. And she pointed out, it's in there, it is being handled. The employees are being handled, it's on the list. And as we get into it, uh, city treasurer, with the assistance of our auditor, has three options for us on that.
I apologize, like, as I read that, too, the two hundred thousand, the genuine, genuine stuff, I don't kind of got my, my, further wrapped it through, but I do apologize that it does say that in there, but I just feel like to see that as soon as possible. I just think we've taken a long path, but nobody really had that.
That's all. All right. Any other comments?
I, if I, if I might, um, I just also say that I'm in support of that also, and I know that you try to be very careful in making sure that we are doling out correct amounts of money because some, some of the things that we talked about in random logo, and Jimenez has pointed that out, so I agree with him also.
Thank you.
Any other comments from either the council or, um, those in attendance? Hearing and saying none, uh, we'll move on from the public hearing. We'll move back to the regular city council meeting, and we want to item seven, discussion of public actions pertaining to the public hearing. Item one, may I raise some discussion for possible action, approval of second reading of ordinance seven four three, Bill two thousand twenty-one dash six, and then title five, chapter five of the city code of the city of the league, setting forth hours designated for public use of city parks. All in the hand, a motion on the side?
I'm sure.
Motion from Councilman Flankis, do I have a second? Second from Councilman Williams Harper. Any further discussion on the side?
The one question I have is, uh, I'm all in favor of this here. Do we have to have the signage posted before it has an invite to it? We have to have signage made as, hours and all that?
All right, yeah, there's, um, at the very end, there's twenty days after it becomes effective, um, after passage. So I don't know if, if we need to.
We have it in the past, but Sheriff Henry, do you think that would be something that would be beneficial?
Correct, you know, you have to have your signage up, and it has to be seventy feet apart. And that's indicated in, in the ordinance, but, uh, okay. Yeah, I would imagine it would have to be done before passing.
Right. Going to go, Mike?
It says you have to see those signs, sign it from one side, but I do that for seven, for the facing the street.
I think it also says, says it on, on five, five feet, I know.
Or at the entrance to the park, I would imagine.
Yeah, at all, any, it's, 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 five, five feet, okay.